All meeting in order, I invite you to join with me in the objection. Dear Lord, we are thankful this day for all the blessings you have bestowed on us. We are thankful for the resurrection of Jesus Christ our Lord. You have given us the gifts of faith, hope, and love. You strengthen our hope so that we may continue to walk with you. You deepen our faith so that we may trust that you are with us in all that we do. You show us your love so that we may show others the gifts you have promised to us. Give us the knowledge to lead when required, listen when needed, and show compassion for everyone. We pray in your holy name. We have two special presentations tonight. First is Terry Price. Terry, would you come up meet me and bring anybody you would like to bring with you?
I barely bring your phone if you want me to take it for you. Well, I did. I got my phone. I'm fine. I'm here too.
Terry, put yourself in the chair. Terry was hired as a water treatment plant operator, then remained a water treatment plant operator two, and remained in this position until years from now. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Terry A. Price, who on March 1st, 2021, retired from employment in the City of Alton after 25 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Alton, the mayor and the city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-run race, long and happy life. Terry, I can leave. Thank you. Thank you. Scott? Scott was hired as customer service coordinator, then became the customer service supervisor, then the customer account supervisor, and he remained until retirement. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Scott D. Holland, who on March 1st, 2021, retired from employment in the City of Alton after 25 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Alton, the mayor and the city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-run race, long and happy life.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, council, administration. It has been an honor to work with the City of Alton for 25-plus years. Judy, thank you for having that opportunity as well. You and Gary gave me that chance back in '96. I'm thankful for those opportunities and look forward to my future endeavors. And you put up with me for a long time, long nights. I love you. Thank you so much. Lauren, Taylor, and Gray, and Macy Gray couldn't be here. Our granddaughter, she's pushed us pretty quickly, so it's been fun having her and mom with us. We never thought I could be here with my parents. Yep. Thank you.
Next is Scott Holland. Scott? Bring anybody you want with you.
I barely bring your phone if you want me to take it for you. Well, I did. I got my phone. I'm fine. I'm here too.
Terry, put yourself in the chair. That's you. Terry was hired as a water treatment plant operator, then remained a water treatment plant operator two, and remained in this position until years from now. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Terry A. Price, who on March 1st, 2021, retired from employment in the City of Alton after 25 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Alton, the mayor and the city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-run race, long and happy life. Please.
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor, council, administration. It has been an honor to work with the City of Alton for 25-plus years. Judy, thank you for having that opportunity as well. You and Gary gave me that chance back in '96. I'm thankful for those opportunities and look forward to my future endeavors. And you put up with me for a long time, long nights. I love you. Thank you so much. Lauren, Taylor, and Gray, and Macy Gray couldn't be here. Our granddaughter, she's pushed us pretty quickly, so it's been fun having her and mom with us. We never thought I could be here with my parents. Yep. Thank you so much.
Scott, come back. I'm back, buddy. I've got a word to say to you. This man is probably the reason I'm here today. Now, don't y'all say boo.
I'm good, man. We're not booing.
I used to, and up until now. When I didn't know something, I called Scott. And I mean, I didn't know one department from another. If my water was running out from the sink, I called Scott. And he always told me who I think it is. This man is a loss to our Alton Hall City, and we love him very, very much. It's mother daddy, or right here, as they were at church when I baptized my first baby. And that's been a long, long time. I'm 80 now, and I remember that day seeing your old man. And I've talked with all of you too. Our children went to the same school. Scott is just not replaceable. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Move on to number five, approval of minutes. Consider approval of March 15, 2021, regular and closed meeting minutes. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Hamilton, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Under agenda adjustments, I have one. We need to add an item after number 13 to discuss the bid process for Alton Hall business.
I move.
Second by Councilmember Powell, second by Councilmember Lauer, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Municipal calendars in your agendas. Anyone have any questions? Move to the consent agenda ordinance 2115, motion amendment to appropriate Parks and Recreation Care Act funds to appropriate event sponsorship donations, resolution to support the bill for funding nuclear decommissioning. And just to clarify what that is, so people wonder what that is, the city is one of 19 owners of part of a nuclear plant. And one of the things we're required to do is have money in a decommissioning fund when ultimately that nuclear plant is taken offline, has to be demolished. One of the things we're struggling with right now, as most people are, is the return of investment. So, we have to ask for a bill in the legislature to allow the state treasurer's office to do the investment of the money through Electric Cities, which we're all a part of. This is what we're asking for, and this resolution supports that, which would help give us a return of investment money that would far exceed what we're getting right now, and either lead to no property tax increase or electrical increase, or maybe even reduce our electrical rates, depending on what the return on investments are each year.
Is the verbiage in this resolution the same that all Electric City cities are using?
It is what Electric Cities.
I sent out. Okay. I move approval, then a consent agenda.
On the consent agenda, it's a proclamation for the National Day of Prayer. This hall made motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Hamilton, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Your Honor, we have a proclamation for everybody to sign.
Thank you. Under unfinished business, consider the summer meeting schedule. Last time we talked about going to one time a month in June, July, and August. That is before you tonight. Council is in agreement to move forward with it.
Matt, just ask a pointed question or point again. I think Councilman Townsend had mentioned, let's keep it at 6:30, which I agree with everybody. What, could we leave it at the first Monday of the month, just to keep it as consistent? Oh, no, we're just dropping off that second meeting.
You can if you want to. It will give you at least five weeks between your June and July because of July 4th problem. What's July 4th filed on? What's July 4th filed?
July 4th? July 5th is Monday.
We would have to get later than that.
It's only four weeks.
We can stay there if you want me on July 4th. We normally do not meet the entire week of July 4th because we have people on. But that's totally up to council.
What was that, Chris?
There's no one in the second. There's some.
Right. But I was just trying to keep it consistent with the time and the normal meetings that we have, and that way we're just really basically dropping off the second meeting of the month. Because I felt Dexter's point was, you know.
We can do whatever council wishes.
If we did the first one, okay? If we did the first meeting of the month, then we're still four weeks away. I mean, it's four weeks.
It's gonna be four weeks. I mean, that's just my thoughts, is to keep it as consistent as we can so the folks know when we're meeting, but.
When is holiday? Are we taking city holiday on July 2nd? July 2nd or July?
5th.
I think it's the 5th.
We just have that first, the Monday after the 4th.
Which will be the Monday?
When we go, our whole place shuts down. And that's typically the reason we've avoided that entire week, because we do have several people gone that week.
Right. So, we're looking at June?
June 14 or July 12.
Well, I mean, whatever y'all want to do. I know I won't be here on the 14th. That's only, I mean, I've already.
There's a motion in order.
Yes, ma'am?
That question, we do not meet the week of July 4th.
Okay. Ms. Lauer made a motion that we do not meet the week of July 4th.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, so now we go back to the schedule. You're looking at the second week in July. We can do whatever you want in June or August, which I think would be to get us on the, if we meet the first week in June, we meet on a five-week schedule. Mr. Chris, you got a calendar up? Five-week schedule if we go to the second week in July, and then three weeks to the first week in August?
Three weeks to the first one in August.
All right. I propose we meet on the first Monday in June, the second Monday in June, July. Or is it the?
It's the second.
Second Monday in July, and the first Monday in August.
Okay. All right, I have a motion then to.
January 10, July 12, and August the 2nd.
Okay. Have a motion then, first week in June, July, first week in August. Hold on a minute. Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Lauer, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, installation of speed bumps in Amherst Gardens, I asked for some information since I saw this, and have you got that information yet?
Not directly from HUD, but from another housing director I was able to speak to about the question.
Well, I would prefer it come directly from HUD or our attorney.
Okay.
Counsel, what I ask for, this is asking us to not abide by our current policy. What I asked for was, if we did that, did other housing departments not be responsible for their own roads in their areas?
So, do that again? So, wait a minute.
The road rather than being paid for out of maintenance and paved road, rather than being made out of the property general fund, be paid out of housing?
Housing.
Because that would be, to me, if you're gonna do it, if we're gonna compare it to a private road, we consider funding it that way.
But we don't actually have a policy. We just have like a guideline though. Is that correct? I didn't see any.
We adopted, yeah, we adopted a, not a policy, it was a recommendation years ago. And we just turned down all those other neighborhood streets over there, and I'm not against doing this. I just see that we need to be consistent so we're gonna have an influx of those requests.
So, your question is, is if we do it, can we make a housing authority pay for it?
And keep up the street, so we're not using public funds?
Just within, just within.
Not using city funds.
Just within public housing.
Just within public housing.
Why would we wanna make it where the housing authority would have to pay for their upkeep of their roads if we done this?
I'm asking where other places.
But I think, I think what'd be more logical for us is to go back and revise those guidelines, which was put before us, which nobody in the City of Alton could have achieved, and make it where like public housing departments and subdivisions and things of that nature could possibly have speed bumps or speed humps, which was in the memo.
And I'm not against you on that.
I think that would be easier for us to set. Can I interject one second? So, Neil Lee, we actually talked about this today, and he did have some experience from his time in Greensboro. So, Lee, do you mind just kinda talking about your experience in Greensboro and what they did there?
So, in my 15 years in Greensboro, we owned over 21 properties. Some properties very similar to Amherst Gardens, where the city owned the streets and the property surrounded it. Never did we ever make an attempt to own the streets or be responsible for the maintenance of the streets. Two reasons. First of all, HUD gives us a certain amount of money, capital funds. The repair of the streets could possibly eat up a lot of that funding, where it takes away from providing those funds to take care of the units and other things that need to be taken care of. You know, second of all is when you take on the responsibility of streets, and again, when I talked to the other director, who I know very well, you know, his question is, how could and why would a department take over the responsibility of another department, you know, within the same city? It just did not seem something that was feasible financially, or that HUD would even approve of to kinda do that. In most private complexes, you have like a main street, but then it stops where the complex owns, and there they would be responsible, like here in my little memo to you all regarding other apartment complexes here in Alton Hall. You have that circular, I guess, area where the apartment complex is responsible for the maintenance, and city would not come out and do anything. They would have to hire a private contractor to kinda do that. But never would you see even a private apartment complex want to take over a city street, in my experience, to be honest with you.
So, Mr. Hamilton, you recommended that we read this in our policy here?
Yeah, because the last time we reviewed that, when I think some citizens came up here a few months ago, if you look at that criteria, and in all honesty, it was not a policy, but that criteria, the only place in the city limits that somebody can actually achieve that, I think it was 500 cars within a certain time period. Only place that anybody in the city could achieve it would probably be in the section on Leonard Avenue between Zappus and Walmore. There's not no city street in the city limits of Alton Hall that's not on a major highway or stay on maintained road, where we got 500 cars coming through within that specified time frame.
What were they, what were those streets again? I forgot, actually.
I don't recall.
Were they all three little tiny?
It was several. I think they probably had about seven or eight.
Yeah, it was several. I ran my record.
All those little side streets, yeah.
When those guidelines were first presented, that was several years ago, and that's when speed bumps, speed tables, those sorts of in-street traffic calming were fairly new to public streets. So, it was a pretty high standard. I think since that they've been around.
The proclamation for the National Day of Pray. This Hall made motion to approve the consent agenda. Second by Councilmember Townsend for the discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Your Honor, we have a proclamation for everybody to sign.
Thank you. Under unfinished business, consider the summer meeting schedule. Last time we talked about going to a one-time-a-month in June, July, and August. That is before you tonight. Council is in agreement to move forward with it.
Matt, just ask a pointed question or point again. I think Councilman Townsend had mentioned, let's keep it at 6:30, which I agree with everybody. What, could we leave it at the first Monday of the month? Just to keep it as consistent, oh, no, we're just dropping off that second meeting.
You can if you want to. It will give you at least five weeks between your June and July because of July 4th. What's July 4th filed on? What's July 4th filed on?
July 4th, July 5th is Monday.
We would have to get it later than that.
It's only four weeks.
We can stay there if you want me on July 4th. We normally do not meet the entire week of July 4th because we have people on. But that's totally up to council.
What was that, Chris?
There's no one in the second. In the song.
Right, but I was just trying to keep it consistent with the time and the normal meetings that we have. And that way, we're just really basically dropping off the second meeting of the month. Because I felt Dexter's point was, you know.
We can do whatever council wishes.
If we did the first one, okay, if we did the first meeting of the month, then we're still four weeks away. I mean, it's four weeks.
It's gonna be four weeks. I mean, that's just my thoughts, is to keep it as consistent as we can so the folks know when we're meeting, but.
When is holiday, are we taking city holiday on July 2nd? July 2nd or July?
5th.
I think it's the 5th.
We just asked that first, Monday after the 4th.
Which will be the Monday?
When we go, our whole place shuts down. And that's typically the reason we've avoided that entire week because we do have several people gone that week.
Right, so we're looking at June.
June 14th or July 12th?
I mean, whatever y'all want to do, I know I won't be here on the 14th. That's only, I mean, I've already.
That's a motion in order.
Yes, ma'am?
That question we do not meet. That's the week of July 4th.
Okay. Ms. Lauer made a motion that we do not meet the week of July 4th.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All in favor say aye. Those opposed? Okay, so now we go back to the schedule. You're looking at the second week in July. We can do whatever you want in June or August, which I think would be to get us on the. If we meet the first week in June, we meet on a five-week schedule. Mr. Caris, you got a calendar up? Five-week schedule if we go to the second week in July and then three weeks to the first week in August?
Three weeks to the first one in August.
All right, I propose we meet on the first Monday in June, the second Monday in June, July. Or is it the?
It's the second.
Second Monday.
Second Monday in July. And the first Monday in August.
Okay. All right, I have a motion then to.
June 7th, July 12th, and August the 2nd.
Okay. Have a motion then, first week in June, July, first week in August. Hold on a minute. Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Lauer, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Under new business, installation of speed bumps in Amherst Gardens. I asked for some information since I saw this, and have you got that information yet?
Not directly from HUD, but from another housing director I was able to speak to about the question.
Well, I would prefer it come directly from HUD or our attorney. Counsel, what I ask for, this is asking us to not abide by our current policy. What I asked for was if we did that, did other housing departments not be responsible for their own roads in their areas?
So do they, so wait a minute.
The road rather than being paid for out of maintenance and paved road, rather than being made out of the property general fund, be paid out of housing because that would be. To me, if you're gonna do it, if we're gonna compare it to a private road, we consider funding it that way.
Well, we don't actually have a policy, we just have like a guideline though, is that correct? I didn't see any kind.
We adopted, yeah, we adopted a, you're not, not a policy, it was a recommendation years ago. And we just turned down all those other neighborhood streets over there, and I'm not against doing this. I just see that we need to be consistent so we're gonna have an influx of those requests.
So your question is, is if we do it, can we make a housing authority pay for it?
And keep up the street so we're not using public funds?
Just within, just within.
Using city funds.
Just within public housing.
Just within public housing.
Why would we want to make it where the housing authority would have to pay for their upkeep of their roads if we done this?
I'm asking where other places.
But I think, I think what'd be more logical for us is to go back and revise those guidelines, which was put before us, which nobody in the city of Alamo could have achieved, and make it where like public housing departments and subdivisions and things of that nature could possibly have speed bumps or speed humps, which was in the memo.
And I'm not against you on that.
I think that would be easier for us to set.
Can I interject one second? So me and Lee, we actually talked about this today, and he did have some experience from his time in Greensboro. So Lee, do you mind just kind of talking about your experience in Greensboro and what they did there?
So my 15 years in Greensboro, we owned over 21 properties. Some properties very similar to Amherst Gardens, where the city owned the streets and the property surrounded it. Never did we ever make an attempt to own the streets or be responsible for the maintenance of the streets. Two reasons. First of all, HUD gives us a certain amount of money, capital funds. The repair of the streets could possibly eat up a lot of that funding, where it takes away from providing those funds to take care of the units and other things that need to be taken care of. You know, second of all is when you take on the responsibility of streets. And again, when I talked to the other director, who I know very well, you know, his question is, how could and why would a department take over the responsibility of another department, you know, within the same city? It just did not seem something that was feasible financially or that HUD would even approve of to kind of do that. In most private complexes, you have like a main street, but then it stops where the complex owns. And there they would be responsible, like here in my little memo too, while regarding other apartment complexes here in Alamo. You have that circular, I guess, area where the apartment complex is responsible for the maintenance. And city would not come out and do anything, they would have to hire a private contractor to kind of do that. But never would you see even a private apartment complex want to take over a city street, in my experience, to be honest with you.
So Mr. Townsend, you recommended that we read this in our policy or?
Yeah, because the last time we reviewed that, when I think some citizens came up here a few months ago, if you look at that criteria, and in all honesty, it was not a policy. But that criteria, the only place in the city limits that somebody can actually achieve that, I think it was 500 cars within a certain time period. Only place that anybody in the city could achieve it would probably be in the section on Leonard Avenue between Zappos and Walmart. There's not no city street in the city limits of Alamo that's not on a major highway or stay on maintained road, where we got 500 cars coming through within that specified time frame.
What were those streets again? I forgot, actually.
I don't recall.
Were they all three little tiny?
It was several, I think they probably had about seven or eight.
Yeah, it was several.
All those little side streets, yeah.
When those guidelines were first presented, that was several years ago. And that's when speed bumps, speed tables, those sorts of in-street traffic calming were fairly new to public streets. So it was a pretty high standard. I think since that they've been around for a while, you know, you still need to have a standard because you don't want them on every single street. You still want to set, you know, a threshold, there's some safety concerns as well in terms of visibility not being in a curve. So what we had used or have been going by was established when those were fairly new devices. We can go back and look, and council can set that threshold at a different level. But again, you know, you gotta set it at a level that you're comfortable with to make sure that the roads are still for traveling on, but are still done so in a safe fashion, and there's a criteria that has to be met.
Does DCT or any other municipalities have guidelines or?
They do.
So Cindy actually, so Cindy actually already gathered this information for us. And so we kind of solved this issue that you're talking about right now and separating apart from this because we're asking for an exception to the current guidelines. However, we do agree that the guidelines we have need to be revisited. So we already actually gathered the research, and it's just a matter of coming back to council at another meeting time to discuss the recommendation. Our street count, for example, was higher than any of the other cities that we got information from. So we do agree that we need to revisit that, but we see this particular item that Lee is requesting an exception for as separating apart from revising that guideline and adopting it as a policy.
So exactly.
We did have a presentation.
Okay, good, now I look forward to seeing a presentation.
We've already gone through half of it already.
Don't go. I will too.
That is just fine, I would try to be brief.
Don't have to be brief, we have, I got a short agenda.
That's okay. So start off by, last week, I celebrated my one-year anniversary with the city of Alamo. So it didn't take a full year, but within that time, I had an opportunity to speak with many residents, talk to other department heads, talk to city staff, and talk about the issues that were important and pertinent to the housing department. On a monthly basis, I attend resident council meetings where the residents have their own meetings, they bring up issues. Thank goodness, I've got Chief Dooley and Chief Pierre Bruton there, because it can get very testing. A lot of the issues have to do with safety and peaceful enjoyment of the community. And the issues of speed bumps have come up on several occasions, including the very first meeting I went to in April of last year. There's some really good people in Alamo, and I know for a fact that an overwhelming number of them want some kind of safety measure put in place to stop these cars from flying up and down the street. In addition, when I talk to my staff, they have said this has been the issue for years, okay? But it's always got stopped somehow, somewhere before it got to city council. But they see it as a safety issue also because we know the number of kids that are in the property. We know the elderly adults that are in the property. But staff themselves have been put in a situation with cars flying up and down. I can personally speak, okay, from witnessing and hearing cars with no regard going up and down one of those three streets. You can hear tires screeching from trucks, motorcycles, and cars. The petition, and you talked about, this petition is different. It's different because I'm not asking you to change the criteria, I'm asking you to make an exception. Because you have the criteria right here. And this request pretty much takes care of all the criteria except for one, and it talks about that 1,000 average daily. According to Chief Dooley's memo back last year in September, he concluded we were second in the 14 streets that were named. We had over 894 cars going up and through Amherst. Now, the thing about it, you all know how Amherst is, and you remember years ago, you all had approved a barrier, okay, which would make it similar. And I think that caused some different feelings from residents and also the community. So what I'm asking for is not changing the criteria, because I think the criteria are good. But the thing that we have to remember, not only do we own the property, we're also responsible for managing the property. We have, we get HUD funding, it goes back to your question, to maintain that property, the safety of the residents that are included in that property, and we should be doing everything that we can to ensure that. There are other things I've put in place since coming on board. Speed bumps, it will really be the icing on the cake because we have cameras being installed right now. The cameras are great as a deterrent, but the fact is, speed bumps are gonna do something right away. It's gonna slow the traffic down. It's gonna stop cars from doing the posted 25 miles an hour to slow them down to hopefully less than 10 miles an hour. I am concerned about the safety of the kids because on any given day, especially a warm day today when I was here, I got kids on bicycles on sidewalks and in the streets. And I'm amazed that nobody's been injured. Now, since I've been there, there have been accidents on the three streets that we're talking about. Police have been called out from cars hitting each other. All it's gonna take is one time, and then what it's gonna take is who are they gonna hold responsible for not doing anything? It's gonna be us, the city at this point in time. So my thing is, I don't believe in being long-winded, I believe in getting this to the point. So me coming here today is just twofold. First of all, I'm representing the residents of Alamo, okay? I'm representing the visitors, I'm representing the staff in the delivery of a safer city-owned property. The second thing is, I'm representing the city and being proactive. And city council priority number three, it talks about responsibility of protecting and safeguarding our city. That's what this will do. So my thing is, I'm requesting approval for the installations. We've looked at budgets, we've looked at the costs. We've gone around some things from having the city actually do the asphalt and me buying out of this public housing budget removable speed bumps. It costs more money, but again, the issue ever came, which no one can ever remember, those streets ever being scraped or snow removed in the history that I've talked about. But we have four departments. We've got planning, we have public works, we have fire and safety, who've all vetted all the information I'm providing to you and some more information, and all have signed off that this is a good example for the exceptions to criteria that exist right now. Yes, ma'am?
To follow through, some follow-up to that. You made a comment that it always got stopped before getting to council. That was before you got here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you have any, do you have any information or anything further that you would like to tell us or feel comfortable in telling us what folks have said to you why it got stopped before coming here?
No, I mean, just that it's been brought up in staff meetings, it's been brought up by residents before.
Staff meetings, your staff meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Public housing staff?
Correct.
But it never got to here?
Correct.
Okay, number one. Number two, when you said you talked about money, you talked about money. You talked about money through fiscal year 21 we're in now, to do it before June 30th yet?
I've looked at budget, I've talked to the finance department, I know where I am year-to-date. In addition, I do have some money left over in the CARES Act funds, and also my capital funds from 2018 until now. So again, the funding is there through several sources.
Okay, the funding at public housing?
Yes, ma'am. No cost to the city, all public housing department.
To do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but then the maintenance then would be regular, is that what you were talking about, at the maintenance? Thank you.
And I'll just add, going back to the safety or future, you know, hopefully we can avoid, be proactive and avoid a child or something getting hit. But I do want to remind council, to those that don't know, probably, I would say approximately 15 years ago, we had a resident to get hit and is probably in a wheelchair down in Amherst community.
Was that on Leonard?
No, not on Leonard.
Okay.
So I think this will definitely be a step in the right direction.
So I got a question. I know it says mostly speed bumps. So you're against speed bumps or speed humps?
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps?
Right, the speed bumps.
What does the data say on those, as far as which are better?
Looking at the data, you talk about for speed humps. So speed humps are those long ones, pretty much. Those are something that we could buy, you know, as from outside or in some places like at Rock Creek, the park, the city has put them up. But the thing about, there's no uniformity, they're not consistent. These are put up without a mold or something like that. When we're looking at uniformity for all of them, you know, when talking to public works and talking to the other departments, we would be looking at purchasing the mold, the actually, the removable speed bumps, not humps, and going into the property. They would be black with the yellow stripes so people would be able to see them from a distance, so they can be, it's a caution to slow down.
How tall?
No more than three inches.
See, it's been my experience that places that we've been around, children's neighborhoods and places like that, speed humps will slow you down. And now, speed bumps, if you don't want to slow down, just do a bump, you know, you can go right across them. So I just wonder what the data said as far as being effective. I know even some of the places I've seen, like a run strip on those, speed bumps, three or four in a row, if you don't slow down, you just kind of sail over the top of them.
One of the reasons we're looking at the speed bumps, speed humps are like a little ramp. So I can see the kids or somebody taking advantage of that. At speed bumps, they're rounded off, so again, you're not gonna use those as a launching pad.
Right. How wide are these speed humps?
Humps or humps?
You can buy them in different length, you can buy them in different widths.
Yeah, if you go out to Locust, to the, we had, can't remember the neighborhood, they've got three or four coming throughout the development there, and they're about probably four feet. And they're nicely crowned, and I can understand, you know, the kids, the kids. But they're gonna, kids are gonna do what kids want to do anyway, because what we do, you do, or what they do. Do you not think the humps that are larger would be better off long-term? Because I was surprised there was only 800 some vehicles going through there. My business is just a quarter mile from there and going down Leonard Avenue. The four-way stop sign, it's always a big given, take this and go. And I'm just, the other thing I'm concerned with, with the recycled rubber or the plastic, there's gonna, I don't care where you put them, there's gonna be people that are going to abuse it. And the life expectancy of those, are they greater than asphalt?
The life expectancy with these are about 15 years. For asphalt, you're looking at about 20 years, about a five-year difference.
And have you looked at the cost between asphalt and, I think you looked at 2,000, 2,500 for the recycled or the rubber or plastic? Have you got the price for the boards regarding asphalt?
It's almost comparing apples or oranges because for the asphalt, that means that the city would be providing it, so there would be no cost for the material or the labor, but I'll be paying for the materials. Again, we have that already, so there would be very little cost for the asphalt. But again, it goes back to the uniformity because they can do them, but they don't, it's not a mold to do them, it's just someone building them up. So you may have some three inches, some may go four inches, you know, that would be my concern, especially in the public right, the public right of ways.
Ms. Lauer?
I don't see the downfall of not doing it. He says that he's got the money to do it, it's been recommended time and time again. What is the problem? We can build this out for two more meetings if we need to, but what is, what is the problem with going ahead with it?
I think the only question was our policy recommendations, and Mr. Townsend has suggested we redo that. If we redo that, we can, we can address those issues, I think. Have you, or have you got something in a policy that, about damage to vehicles? Is there any other cities addressing that?
We reached out to North Island League of Municipalities. Actually, the adjuster was on site, and I had a conversation with them. And basically, what he looks at as far as a rating for housing authorities and housing agency, it's a good thing because it does to prevent accidents. It shows that you're being proactive in it. But is there a policy regarding that? No, absolutely not.
Well, if staff and the attorney is comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay.
And not to deviate from what's been said already, but they're asking for an exception to the policy. So we can still go back at a later time and review the policy, yes.
So we need a vote to approve?
We need a motion to approve the request.
A motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Hughes, second by Councilmember Lauer, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Number 12, consider appointments to boards and commissions. We apparently have maybe another candidate coming forward, so I'll ask council to delay that until the next meeting. Anyone have a problem with that?
The only one is, just HRC, right?
That's the only one I saw.
I just would remind folks that are watching and folks that are listening tomorrow that most of our appointments to the commissions and boards expire on June 30th. And so if folks are interested in wanting to become active in what's going on with the city, I would just say, folks, go online and fill out the application because there will be more come July 1st.
There will, yes.
I just, do we need a motion? You're gonna move, just hold it up until next?
If the council is gonna find one, we'll just continue it to the next meeting. Number 13, selection of the voting delegate for the 2021 League of Municipalities City Vision Conference Annual Business Meeting. Who among us actually signed up for that? Just mark this in myself so far.
Mayor, you need to be the voting delegate.
I guess I don't have a choice since you're a candidate to do it.
That's right.
I need a motion then.
So who?
Motion by Councilmember Hawes, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Michael, will you send in the notification?
That's the 12, I think.
It said it was three days, but I think one of the days you may not have a full lot.
Ah, yeah, it's, yeah, the first, the 20th is just almost nothing.
Yeah.
Really, the 21st and the 22nd looks like, and they're not full. Up until the day of.
Start, say usually right after. The add-on that I discussed, considering the bid process for Alamo Business Center. When we approved moving forward with the bid specs, I think it was in January, I went back and looked at the minutes, we actually had some discussion in the presentation before that about whether to do a construction manager at risk. What council approved was move forward with the bid specifications, and it's not clear, were we moving forward with the bid specifications as we have done in the past, where the engineer that puts together the bid process will also send out the bids and brings back a contract to be the project manager? Or are we going to go through the process of hiring a construction manager at risk where we would have to send out for, request for qualifications and then get someone, and then they would go through the bid specs and eventually send out the bid specs? Which is council's way to proceed. The bid specs are ready to go if we go with the engineer.
Well, most water sewer projects, we go with the engineer.
We have in the past, yes.
And that's option one, correct?
That would be, well, it's just whichever one council wants to go. That's the first one I mentioned, yes.
Also, 24, 27 is what we're talking, that's being handled by the engineer as well.
The engineer, I don't know of any water and sewer project or road that we haven't used, the engineer did the project manage it to.
Quite honestly, I don't, I'm not in favor of hiring an outside person to do it. I would prefer to keep it as it's been, we have more control over it. We've had great success with it. Quite honestly, I don't see why we would even think about changing.
And always speaking of the engineer that's currently been working on it?
It would be, that would be our policy, what we've done in the past, let's put it that way. The engineer that does the bid specs has been the one that did the project management. I maintain a motion, however, council wants to proceed.
So.
Make a motion to, as we've done, to maintain the engineer of choice that has the project to be the project engineer.
Certainly.
And do the project management.
Exactly.
Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Lauer, further discussion?
And do we need to name that, who that is now?
Yes, we can.
I think we need to.
Council went through RFQs to select the engineer to design the park and do all the bid specs, and the winning firm was, or firm that we chose was Chambers Engineering. They have now got the bid specs ready to go, and if we decide, if we approve this motion, they will be going out this week.
You'll permit them?
Permits in hand, no, but yes, they've satisfied everybody. They haven't come in the mail yet.
That's not long.
That's what we're holding up, they haven't got them in the mail, but we've been told that. They haven't got them in the mail, but we've been told that everybody's satisfied and they've met all the conditions. Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Coming around the table, Mr. Ferris.
I don't have anything.
It's Hughes.
No comment.
Mr. Aldridge.
Apologize for being late. I was out of town at a meeting and did not get out in time. I'm sorry. That's it.
Mr. Townsend?
Uh, two things. Um, actually, I was leaving the New York Trail Senior Apartments over the weekend. And at some point, I think we're going to have to put a stop sign right as you get ready to exit that apartment complex because people coming around the curb from the ambulance base and people coming um, out from the apartment complex, I've seen two cars almost collide because.
Well, that should be, that should be put up now, but that's a stop street. So the way we read our orders, that's a stop street. You're exactly right.
So we need to address that.
We just need to get it put up.
And last but not least, I'm sure some of you have probably already seen it, but in the hub of Almo, Alamo, Walmore, they got um, Alamo's version of Monopoly.
Playing it this weekend.
Um, and actually, I love thi, I love this concept. It promotes a lot of different downtown locations and businesses all throughout the city of Alamo. Um, just one question because I know citizens do ask and they have asked. Um, we, we didn't have anything to do with the input as to what locations were on this board, did we? From a government standpoint?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I stand last person up interesting.
Is it Walmore?
Uh, yeah, they sell them at Walmore.
Yes, they, my kids are playing this weekend.
I know over the weekend, a lot of people was asking questions, you know, why you didn't do this. But it's, it's still a great game. I'm glad to see it. Not complaining, just asking questions. Thank you.
You know who did it?
Yeah.
Funny thing was, you can buy Mar Mountain and, and one of my children playing it this weekend said, wait a minute, Mar Mountain's a state park, you can't buy it. That's such a funny.
Thank you. I'm going to start and let this Hall chime in, whatever she has on the charters of freedom. Charter of Freedom has been, out front, you will see the mold set for they're getting ready to pour the forms. So you will see that party moving forward. Uh, don't know exactly what day they're pouring it yet, but they have set up the mold. Um, Ms. Hall, you have anything further to?
Uh, I just, some folks wanted those paper forms. And I have some of those still, if anybody wants a paper form. Uh, there's been some, there's been some changes in, in our, one of our local contacts, um, who had been working with our local steering committee and we just got a backup punt now. And when we find out who that's going to be representing the charters. Uh, there's a lot of discussion at our last meeting about the date for our dedication. Um, and the dedication will be a wonderful, wonderful event. We've had several dates thrown out and some of them worked, some of them didn't work, but we're back at the drawing board now. We're looking to do it sometime in September. Um, and it really made a festive occasion out front. Um, with music and speakers and food trucks and all kinds of things out there. So be just waiting for a date, hoping to do it, that won't interfere with anything else that's already planned.
Council, have any suggestions of any dates? And if we need to go into October, we can because actually, the Foundation Forward chairman that started all this is tied up most of September, so we'll be limited what we can do in September.
And I'm thinking at this point, since we have tried to work on our date and give it to him, I think what we've got to do now is give, just find out from him when he can do it and work around that, but. Let me ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We as a council won't do anything as far as.
Maybe not October yet. The original.
Buying into.
I bought, I bought my own bread.
Well, I'm asking if we as a council are going to?
I, I, I know I bought a bread, Mrs. Hall bought a bread, or Benton had bought one, Chris has bought one.
Okay, so the answer is none.
I think in, everybody's doing it individually, I think.
Okay, that's fine. And there will be several plaques that are put up there for folks that are making large donations. Or, um, for instance, the West, at least the West Stanley. And it may be that there are going to be other Brick Lane classes in the county that are going to do some work on it. And they will be recognized and folks that are making large donations to help do it.
Anything further you have, any other topic?
Me?
Yeah, go ahead, run them.
Yeah, okay. Um, there are. Uh, first of all, shout out to Parks and Rec. Um, and to the PD, because the PD was represented on it Saturday as well at City Lake Park. They, there were Easter, there were Easter egg hunts all morning out there. Um, from the wee ones to the larger ones, or might have been the other way around, I can't remember. But police department was out there and the, the Parks Recreation did a great, great job out there. And it started off pretty cool that morning, but, um, so attaboy to them. This week is Food Truck Friday. This week is Food Truck Friday at City Lake Park with Too Much Sylvia. Um, and it's the 30th anniversary of that organization. Pfeiffer, um, has basically, um, their alumni division has sent out an email to all alum from the 90s, early 90s who may have been there on campus when Sylvia was first there. So we're hoping to have a great attendance. And I just cringe every time I watch the weather for Thursday and Friday. I'm just hoping that they're not riding, it'll be here Friday night at midnight. So, uh, with that though, and the planning, um, is Lisa around there?
She's right here.
Okay. Just Lisa has done a young woman's job about, um, getting everything prepared out there. Uh, guys, we are sitting on a gold mine at that park. Maybe not to raise money, I mean, not for, as a fun, as a making money. But that park is utilized all the time by the folks that are playing disc golf. But we've got an amphitheater that, that has not been utilized at all since it's been there. Not as much as it should be. So we are hoping this will really kick off what that amphitheater can really do. Um, April 9th, Too Much Sylvia, May 7th, the entertainers. May 8th, Right Turn Club will be downtown for, um, as part of, um, the, um.
Beach Blast.
Well, not, we don't have a beach blast, it's not called beach blast. But it's going to be the cruise in that Tiffany is doing. Uh, it would be instead of doing a beach blast. So, um, these are things that are going on right here. This week, uh, we are planning or at least being proactive about parking. If you can imagine, there's not a lot of parking, paid parking out at City Lake Park. And if in fact, this event, because of the food trucks or because of the music, if in fact, this event brings out people, um, we are going to have some folks working to help do some parking out there. Um, we done with, the police department have a, an explorer post. Some I think the chief is looking into. But the sheriff's department has got a cadet program out there and they've done parking uh, at the ag center for some events. So they are coming out and going to help do some parking so that we don't tear up the grass out there if we need to park in the grass for folks. So, um, so attaboy's to Parks and Rec and to the PD for doing it in the past weekend.